I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on this evening's agenda is going to be a public hearing. The purpose of this evening's public hearing is to accept comments on the proposed amendments to the Peters Township zoning ordinance and subdivision of land development ordinance. This public hearing was advertised in the Observer reporter as well as on the Peters Township website. There will be a brief presentation by township staff, and this will be followed by questions from council members as well as comments from the audience. Action on this ordinance is on tonight's agenda, so Mr. Law, turn your review.
And then I'll leave it up to council. We can go in some detail about the ordinance, but quite frankly, what you have in front of you tonight is very similar, well, it's exactly the same as what's discussed in the little workshop.
Let me just ask, is there anybody in the audience that is here to find out about this proposed zoning ordinance? Pete, anybody? You can close it.
Okay. All right. Well, as Paul noted, this is largely the same thing we saw at our August 19 meeting. The primary difference being that at that time, it was actually two separate ordinances. Now we've combined them into one, made a handful of dramatical changes. The one thing I'll point out is Planning Commission did review this ordinance, and they largely recommended that council approve or adopt the ordinance. The only thing that they would have liked to see is the exclusion of the section allowing for minor plans. They would actually like to still be able to review the minor plans rather than have them reviewed by staff. Moving into a couple of notable changes, first and foremost, we do now have a section on pre-application or sketch plan meetings, and these are just requirements as to what's expected from the applicant at the time for such a plan. And essentially, these are plans that are broad-based, where we just review the broad-based concepts, talk about some of the different technical parameters that we'll expect to see when the actual submission is submitted. And again, these are just informal discussions that are held before an actual application is submitted. Now, moving on to the application process, we do now have a section on what constitutes a complete application. This has been an issue in the past where we're constantly chasing applicants for different items. Now, the ordinance will read that you have to submit all these items that are listed there in this section here, from the fee to the application to sewage documents, stormwater management plans, so on and so forth, as they're applicable. And if not, then the ordinance talks about what we can do, including possibly administratively denying the plan, which in that case, you'd have to resubmit at the next, for the next month's meeting. Probably the biggest change is, again, the minor plans. This is what the Planning Commission would like to see removed from the ordinance, but what we're proposing here is that minor plans would be those that could be reviewed by staff. They wouldn't have to go before Planning Commission or council. And for the purposes of this ordinance, what we're considering a minor plan is any subdivision that contains three or less lots, any land development that consists of an expansion of less than 5% total increase of an existing structure, and that all those need to be either a permitted use, well, they all have to be permitted uses, contain no new public infrastructure, and cannot be seeking any type of zoning variance or an ordinance modification. And if they do meet that criteria, then staff would review and approve it on a similar process and timeline that we would normally do with Planning Commission and council. It just doesn't have to go before them.
And I think the important thing to know from a resident's standpoint, you get these simple subdivisions where people are either joining two lots together or subdividing a lot. And when you file that as a resident, you can expect that that's going to take 60 to 90 days to be approved right now, because it's got to go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and it's got to come to council for action. And the action you take here normally is just perfunctory, and the difference would be that a resident who wants to do that kind of simple subdivision could have that done, no doubt, in less than two weeks. And I think that makes sense to me. I don't know why we would put people through a time-consuming process for no purpose.
Also, for the record, just want to show that Mr. Archery is present.
One of the other notable changes to the application process in itself is that we now have language about how time extensions will be handled. Any type of minor extension, in other words, something that's less than 30 days, that can be handled by the township manager. For those plans that are being approved by the Planning Commission, the time extensions for those plans would be handled by the Planning Commission, and for those plans being approved by council, those would then be, the time extension for those would be approved by This is the process. It's largely staying the same. The only item I will note is where we see this 29 days. Previously, this was actually seven days, so we're giving the staff a little bit additional time to do the review before the 90-day time clock actually starts. And the last item that we're changing are the construction and design specification, and for the most part, we're just updating our current standards for roads and streets and driveways to that of either PennDOTs requirements or Ash-toe requirements, as well as making some new or revising some definitions so that they're consistent across both our subdivision land development ordinance as well as our zoning ordinance. Previously, we had different definitions for roads in one chapter versus the other. Now they will be the same. Same thing with driveways, streets, public and private. So that is the Cliff Notes version of the ordinance. Do you have any questions?
Any of you in council have any questions?
If, and that doesn't...
No, no, you go.
I was just dealing with the concept of staff's review. If, if there was a denial that resulted from that, would there be the opportunity for that applicant to go to the full panel?
The way this is written, it's similar to the way any type of denial would be handled from, for a land development plan, so that if they came before staff with a minor plan, we would deny it, and then the plan is basically, well, denied, for lack of a better term. They can always make application again, but it would go through the same exact process, similar to the way a land development or subdivision goes to council now, and if it's denied.
Frank?
I have a question. I know in the past, I've done some, I've been to smaller townships and boroughs, and if somebody has two lots and they're side by side, they just get a survey, and they take it to the township, and the township writes a letter saying, yeah, we have no problem with this consolidation, and you just attach it to a deed. I mean, doesn't that seem a lot simpler for some of these things?
But that's in essence what this allows for now. It takes away this process of having to go get a recommendation from the Planning Commission and then bring it to council, and council spend, you know, one minute making a motion.
Well, I know. It seemed to be, I always thought it was kind of a drawn-on process for something as simple like that. I mean, I'm not saying maybe on a flag law or something, but two, just two side-by-side lots, I think that's a good idea.
And the MPC differentiation is between simple and a subdivision, you know, in terms of that definition. I do have a concern, Mr. Lewis, that you've raised, because I've not thought about that. I've not really seen any cases where you would appeal staff to the court, you know, from a denial.
It might not be very likely, but...
But I wonder if the recourse would be that a denial would go to the full, you know, because they would have to appeal planning or the board. I don't know if they can appeal, they could appeal zoning officer determinations to zoning board. I'm not sure there's a mechanism to appeal from staff. From what I've seen with minor plan ordinances, typically, a denial is a denial. Whatever the staff decides, that's the decision. There's no, you know, appeal to any governing body or planning commission, other than you can actually take it to court if you are going to appeal the decision. Similar to the way, you know, a subdivision or land development would be appealed from a decision that you guys made.
So it wouldn't be the same as whenever the zoning officer makes determination, and you have the right to take it to the zoning hearing board?
Yeah, at least he's statutory. You know, we have a statutory mechanism in place that sends you to that direction. I don't know that we have the same, but I do recognize staff typically in most municipalities do simple subdivisions. That's not unusual. I've just, until you raised the question, really never thought about it, because I think you said, Mark, that doesn't, they can reapply it, only hit their head on the same rock over and over again.
But I guess the question is, what reason would we ever have to deny a simple subdivision or a lot consolidation?
Well, we could if it made like one lot below like a half acre of your buildable lots or something like that.
Right, and that's...
Maybe that required variance to begin with.
I was going to say, you'd have to meet the requirements anyways.
Right, I mean, and that's something that we would deny too if it came before us.
Right, and at least the mechanism in the case law exists from your denial. I just wonder if there's recourse, hey, denial goes to council for final review. I don't know, but I can't...
Yeah, but if you do that, then there's no point changing the ordinance, because then you're back to where we are now.
Well, not necessarily, because if 99% get approved, that's off your plate, you know, and that's the only thought, but I don't know the answer. I've never seen, you know, somebody versus manager, somebody versus the planning director. It's usually zoning officer, the zoning board, or council. But again, I know it's regularly done, simple subdivisions recognizing the MPC.
Let it ride. Any other comments or questions from council?
I agree with Mr. Lewis. Let's let it ride. If it ever comes to the point that Mr. Holdren denies one, then, you know, we'll deal with it at that point.
We can always amend the ordinance again, too.
Right, here we go.
If it becomes an issue.
Can I move to close the public hearing?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries five. That's all we need.
About eight and a half. A year old.
All right, next item on the agenda will be special reports. We have one this evening.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to council's attention what's been happening in the township with regard to programs that have been offered over the last 30 days. So to start with, the open house at the fire department, it's an annual event. They attracted over 400 people to come to that event on the day that it was handled. The haunted trail this year attracted over 2,500 people. You can see the line of people waiting to go into at the event. One of the things that's neat about this event is it not only involves township staff, but all of the actors on the trail, for the most, for the vast majority of them are volunteers. There are kids from the high school or adults in the community who volunteer their time for two days to participate in the event. There was a trunk-or-treat event that the recreation department did. They had 500 kids sign up for this event. And again, what I think just as impressive as that is, 85 people signed up to decorate a trunk and pass out candy or treats to the kids, and, you know, this is typical of what you saw up there. The police department coordinated a public safety day. They estimate they had as many as 250 people there. It was not only our department, but it was other agencies, as well as the fire department and the ambulance service who were there for that event. And then the last event I want to bring to your attention was one that was hosted by the library. It was an adult Halloween-themed event. They actually had 120 people come to that event in the library. And the other great thing about this is that each and every one of these events were supported by other departments of the township to be able to make them possible.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay, moving on to minutes from last meeting.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Any changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Five, nothing. Audience comments? This is a portion of the meeting where a member of the audience can address council for up to five minutes, so if you'd like to address council, you can just go to the podium.
If you guys, this would be your time.
Yes. On non-agenda, I...
Yes. Just need you to state your name and address, and I don't know, do we have a...
Yeah, there's a pen and a tablet there to sign in.
My name is Tammy Stoker, and my address is 104 Gulfview Drive, McMurray, and I am here to talk about baseball. And as we know, as we all know, Natalie Maholick has found an additional grant of $500,000 for the township to use on PWP-1 to turf the field. On Tuesday, October 22, at 2:50 p.m., I received a text message from Natalie that the grant was official. At some point in the contract dealings, the council voted to make PWP-2 the priority field to renovate, and Field 1 was an addendum project. This is why PWP-1 was not going to be ready for the Peters Township High School baseball season in March. The Peters Township Baseball Association successfully runs an organization by the township, and we have many children that have gone through the program and continue to sign up to play baseball. PWP-2 absolutely needs to be renovated, as many of the fields in this township need to be renovated. If one of the reasons was to redo this field first was because more children play on that field, and that is understandable. These children, including my third son, that play here have a season that starts late April. They play in spring into the summer and fall, and they have other fields that they get to play on. Peters Township Baseball Association is where the kids learn how to play baseball. They learn the fundamentals of the game, and the highly skilled baseball players in their age group play travel ball, which they try out for in the hopes to grow, grow up and play for the Peters Township High School team, which, again, they have to try out for. Most of the high school team have played through the Peters Township Baseball Association, the travel ball, and have been playing ball together for many years, including the class of 2025. The Peters Township High School team starts their regular season mid-March and ends in May with the hopes of going to playoffs. So doing Field 2 would sit there for months while we are busing our high school students to Washington and Jefferson, when they could be playing at home. As we know, there is no on-school district regulated field that can host our varsity team. It just makes no sense. Their high school season starts first. The delay in the Peters Township, or PWP-1, now has the varsity team getting bussed to W&amp;J Field for every home game. This will decrease the amount of peer participation and possibly family due to the travel time. And I brought, if anyone wants to see or make a copy of, how many times they will be getting bussed to W&amp;J Field. And you can have this if you like.
How many times is it?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight times, on top of being bussed for all of their away games. The original plan to fix PWP-1 would have cost a significant amount of money to resurface with dirt and grass, and later to come back in a few years to turf it. This would have resulted in an incredible waste of funds. With the money that was found by Natalie, our state representative, we can turf it now with the change in the contract with the contractor and make the Field 1 our priority focus right now. I am sure there are a few adjustments that need to happen. The work order needs to be changed, but there is still time to get it done. There needs to be a sense of urgency and for someone to oversee this project, someone with a vested interest due to the fact of a tight timeline. If the football stadium was being torn apart for an upgrade and amid reconstruction, they put that on hold, and they told the team next year that they were going to be bussed 40 minutes away because Hoffbauer was now going to get done, and that was the priority field, due to the amount of kids that play on it and more games are played on Hoffbauer, there are many football families that would be up in arms. And with council members that have football players, and very good ones, that I might add, and the knowledge that we have with the money that the township now has, and the contractor that could possibly get this job done, and the fact that we all have only one field in this township for our specific sport, you would be requesting what I am requesting too. We have to get this done. The mission and the goal this whole time is to get the kids to play ball at home. This is not a personal agenda. If anyone on council had a senior playing on a field in this predicament, you would be where I am standing right now. And I apologize for anyone that I've talked to on the phone, or emails, or text messages, or any verbiage, and I came across aggressive, or I misconstrued anything that I heard and that I put out there. I am sorry. I did not mean to do that. I know I can come off aggressive. It's just, I'm sorry. There's just no excuse for it. We are asking for you to use this money and get PWP-1 done. It has to be a priority. Build the Field of Dreams for the kids and their peers. Build it for the coaches. Build it for the parents and the grandparents to watch their kids on the home field. Build it for Coach Rock. Build it for the varsity team and the class of 2025, Jackson, Zach, Michael, Ray, Ben, Nathan, Luke, and Matthew, so they can close their baseball chapter for the Peters Township High School on their brand-new turf field that you have allowed to be built this year. Today, I received an email from Nathan Raffel, who's the contractor. It says, "I understand you have questions about the possibility of adding synthetic turf to Field 1 and how this might affect the construction scheduled to ensure playability for spring of 2025. If synthetic turf is added, we will make every effort to complete Field 1 on schedule, potentially allowing for a spring completion of the project. To verify successful completion in spring of 2025 with the proposed changes, timely approval of these modifications will be essential. For any questions or concern regarding the project, please contact the township directly." Thank you, Nathan Raffel. I have this email. You can have a copy of that, and you can have a copy of the varsity schedule in hand.
Paul, where are we at with this? What are you working on?
Well, there has been an announcement that the township is in receipt of an additional grant, and what we do not have in hand is a contract with the state of Pennsylvania, and you really can't move forward without that. One of the things, when I spoke to Natalie, and she asked me, what can I do to help accelerate this, I explained to her that on that day, there were over 1,000 grants given under this program. It's a brand-new program in the state of Pennsylvania. And the thing that she could do is expedite getting us a grant agreement. So today, we were contacted by the state indicating that they needed some additional information from us, and that we're going to, it's just a matter of who's signing this agreement. So we're going to get them that, and I would hope, but I can't promise you, that we would have that agreement available for you to take action on at the next council meeting. The other thing is that, you know, we have money that's sitting out there for the, for the current project, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of the Budget has told us that we cannot start this project until the other project is complete. I think that, quite honestly, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And so we're going to be working with them to explain to them how we can delineate the two areas of work, and if we can successfully do that, we can issue a contract to do this work. What we can't do is to simply do a change order under the current contract. The amount of money you're talking about in comparison to the, to the current contract as well in excess of what you're permitted to do under a change order. The other thing you don't want to do is, if we do that, we will bring this project under the RACB regulations, and we are struggling with RACB in terms of just common sense approval of things. So what we've talked to Raffel Construction and the, the organization that's actually do the turf itself is to look at the possibilities of doing this under Co-Stars. The field turf installer is a Co-Stars contractor, and in this case, what you would do is reverse the roles of the two organizations that are working out there. Forced, uh...
Forced turf.
Forced turf would become the primary contractor, and the subcontractor would become Raffel Construction. And the reason why you would do that is that you could move forward, if we have to go out and bid this, it will take 60 to 90 days to bid it. If we can do this under Co-Stars, we don't have to go through that process. But I don't know whether you can do that or not. As you are well aware, when we did the sports lighting out on the field, we found out that the township was going to have to pay for that because the grant did not permit Co-Stars to be used in the way that we wanted to. So we need to get the grant agreement. If we can do it under Co-Stars, we're going to bring that back relatively quickly to award it. We've got to get the, the people that kept the budget to house and move ahead with the project before that project closes up. But the thing that I just want to be clear, nobody here has an interest in delaying this project. And that's one thing that I will object to, is the thought that the people up here who are administering these contracts are doing anything except trying to move this process along. So that I do object to.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a lot of things in motion at this point. Unfortunately, I think we're at the mercy a little bit with the state right now. Hopefully Natalie will be able to put a little pressure on the folks in Harrisburg and try to get this moving.
Yeah, because she talked to them today about it.
Right.
If I could just add a little color. My name is Chris Stoker. Tammy Stoker. I'm on the baseball board for the youth organization. So one, we appreciate you hearing us, right, and we have a senior and obviously down into elementary school. I think what we're just asking is, and this is not your fault, right, I think from a, Paul, from a standpoint of, I've heard this several times, that some class was going to be affected, and I disagree with that, right? They finished playing baseball in May. They didn't open up that field till July, right? So if you, if you wanted to go into this, not you...
The baseball association asked us to postpone the work on the field until...
They could have done the other field, though, because it's not, it's not used, right? So just, if, traditionally, a school district has their own field, right? That's not the case here in Peters Township. There was plans to put a facility in at the new location that was, that was done away with. So we're at the mercy of playing on the Parks and Rec field, which has, which has been a great relationship moving forward. In my eyes, no class has to be affected, because if you're going to plan to have that done for the following year, you start it when that season ends, and we're not on this tight timeline. That's not what happened. So now we're in a situation where if they don't, if we're not able to get it done, these kids will miss out on their entire senior year playing in front of friends, family. While Peters, while Peterswood is not the best place to watch a baseball game, because there's no elevation to it, it's an exciting environment for these children that have waited this long to get to that point. So I think what we're asking is, the money's here, right, and it has come in multiple stages. We understand that. But let's figure out a common sense way to get this field done, because their season starts two months before the youth season starts. There has to be a way for us to get that accomplished. Money's coming. It's coming from the government. It's pretty safe, right, from the standpoint of that it's going to get here, so we would ask...
Yeah, but see, on some of these contracts, if you expend funds, and I don't know this contract, because it's a brand-new program, not seen a contract under this, but on some of these, these grants, if you expend funds before you sign the contract agreement, none of those funds are reimbursable.
Yeah, they won't pay it.
Okay, but we still have the original, right, and they're doing work on, on that field. So if we can amend the contract to just finish Field 1 first before you finish Field 2, considering that's what starts first, and without that, these kids won't have a senior season.
I think that's one of the things they're trying to figure out with the state, because so far, they're telling them they have to have that first project done before they can move into the next one. That's ridiculous. I think everybody up here acknowledges that. So we just need to try to...
We need to convince people to be rational, right?
So that's all we're trying to do, right, to ensure that our kids, not only ours, but there's eight other seniors, and then nine, you know, 60 other kids, from freshmen to JV to varsity, that have that opportunity to play here. They didn't make that decision to, when to start that project, you know, if we, if they're, if they had to do the football stadium, they'd do that the minute they could get on it, right, to ensure that it was done in time for the next season. We waited till July, and then they're doing the youth field first versus the high school field, and their season starts after the high school. So I mean, we're just asking for, for common sense, rational, to your point, ability to, you know, move the equipment 100 feet apart, put that in first, and then finish that while the high school season's playing their, their final season.
And I imagine... And I imagine in two weeks, well, hopefully even sooner than in two weeks, we should be able to take action on that.
We can get that grant contract, we'll be in much better shape.
Is there a concern with waiting two weeks with the contractor? Have you had that discussion with him? Could he?
We have a construction meeting tomorrow with them.
Can you also kind of clarify for the group? Like, whenever the project started, I remember you talking about how they hit rock, and they've had all these hiccups along the way. And that's why, like, I know a lot of people have said to me personally, you know, "No one's working, no one's working, no one's working." But they've hit a lot of roadblocks. Could you maybe just speak on that?
Well, I mean, the project is actually, appears to be, going to be able to be completed on time. When the, there's a drainage system that is used for the turf fields. That's extensive. And one of the things was, they hit solid rock. And the way our contract is set up, it's an unclassified excavation. And so they assumed the responsibility and all the costs associated with that, and it delayed the installation of the turf. But I will tell you, to their credit out there, if you go to Field Two, and that's what's in this contract, for synthetic turfing, they have placed the curb in place. And all the sod that's needed to create the transition from the artificial surface to the natural surface is all in place now. And so, you know, we're in the process of watering it. Given the way the weather is, we're hoping that we actually have some growth on that so that, in fact, as soon as the weather breaks, that field will be ready for use. On the other field, you know, as soon as it became obvious that we were going to get this money, our first discussion with the contractor in the state of Pennsylvania was, we didn't want to install the natural surface. And it wasn't clear to us when we started that discussion that they weren't going to have us do that and tear it back out. And so rationality has prevailed there. So right now, what we're looking at is a change order that removes the value of that from the contract, which will be a savings of about $100,000 to the township. And then moving ahead with a contract that calls for the installation of the artificial surface and.
Yeah, they were going to rip up the natural surface, renatural surface, put the drainage in, then come back and turf it afterward, which would have been basically a loss.
That would have been absurd. But there's a substantial amount of work on Field One, even when it was to be restored, reinstalled with a natural surface. And if you go out there and look at the dugouts right now, what you'll see is there's a tremendous elevation change from where it was before. And the original plan called for the installation of this curbing on the infield that would be needed to ultimately turf it. So all the work that's occurring out there right now is to support that and is moving that process along. So it'll be easier to do. That's why my argument with the state of Pennsylvania is I can clearly delineate one project from the other because there is the, literally, the baselines establish what the difference is in the contract. But I got to convince the state of Pennsylvania of that, and they haven't been easy to work with under this particular grant.
Did the contractor mention, like, certain, like, timeframes that they won't work, weather-related?
The nature of the work that needs to be done on Field One is work that can be done in the winter. The only thing that may be a problem is, again, you'll put a concrete curb that'll run between the transition from the infield to the outfield. And being able to establish sod behind that curb, that might be a challenge depending on what the winter looks like.
At different times, there's been a pond behind the infield there and mud.
Yeah, but it's going to be all, that'll all disappear because that field's going to be completely recreated.
But they can play with a little bit of mud. They've played in some more difficult situations there.
Yeah, but the sod has to be fixed. You can't put kids out on a field where the sod isn't fixed.
Paul, if the Commonwealth, two months from now, or a month and a half from now, say, "Yeah, we'll let you do both projects at the same time," or whatever you're trying to convince them, what would the first thing we would, what would we be doing first?
You'd be doing the drainage. You would be regrading the field and doing the drainage.
No, I'm talking about, would we have to bid that extra work?
We would do it under Co-Stars.
Just trying to do it under Co-Stars.
If they grant a lot. But we don't know whether you're allowed or not.
We know that the contractor's a Co-Stars contractor. We know that the contractor's prepared to work with Raffel Construction as their subcontractor. What I don't know is whether the grant agreement has any restrictions on using Co-Stars.
Because we don't have the agreement yet.
We don't have the agreement.
We have other restrictions.
Does it behoove us? I mean, is there any restriction on us to put it out for bid now? Because by the time the bids come in, we would know whether or not, we would know all that stuff.
But you're not putting it out to bid. What you're going to do is award it under Co-Stars. So I'm going to go to that, I already have pricing from Raffel Construction on this. I have to get pricing from Forest Turf. And depending, as long as those numbers come in at some reasonable amount, then we can just simply award it under Co-Stars.
So when will we know whether we can do the Co-Stars?
As soon as we get the agreement.
So do you anticipate getting that quickly?
I've been told that we should have it in two or three weeks, and that was a week ago.
And was that from Natalie?
No, that was for, yes, that was from Natalie.
So I think all we're asking is that we just adjust priorities, get the high school field in first and then finish the youth field based on need and demand with schedules and with the high school season quickly approaching.
We originally wanted that, at least the group of us did on here, I can't speak for everybody, but I think it was also because the second grant came later, so.
Yeah, we actually applied for this.
We could only do what we could do.
This money that we received is actually the result of the fact that when council found out there wasn't enough money to do both fields, we were directed to see whether or not there was any funding opportunities. We went out and did a grant application almost exactly a year ago. And that is the grant that was funded. And the thing that I would agree with is, the reason why the township has received this money is the efforts of Natalie Haley in reviewing this and Senator Bauter-Lotto. That's how that money came here.
So if everybody wouldn't be against.
We're not. None of us are against it. It has to do with the government, obviously.
So if the funds, if we get approval, does everybody feel pretty good about adjusting to finish the high school field prior to this?
We have to do it legally, and that's, I think, the whole point that we've talked about for the last 20 minutes.
The weather ban.
It wouldn't be us putting it up. It would be legally and.
Weather.
Well, really, the government, you know, the Commonwealth.
If the state gives the go-ahead, I don't think there will be any objection from this board.
We appreciate that. And again, I know you guys have a lot on your plate, and it seems somewhat minor until you're looking at those eight kids saying, "Sorry, guys, no senior season."
Some of us on here feel your pain because, well, Dr. Peroska's not here, but when Dr. Peroska and I were seniors here in 1994, we lost our whole senior year because the stadium construction got delayed, and we only got one home game that year. So we feel that pain.
We appreciate it and appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wish to address council? Okay, I see nobody. We have unfinished business. Looks like there is none. It'll take us a new business. The first item will be a variance issued, 440-1204, the zoning ordinance to allow for the creation of a flaglot on Thomas Road.
So as I indicated in the last meeting, on October 14th, the zoning board issued a variance for a flaglot on Thomas Road. The ordinance requires that for a flaglot, that you need 50 feet. And you would have ended up with setbacks that appear as they are there. And so what was requested is to allow for a variance for a 25-foot flaglot, which was granted. And, you know, one of the things I think it's interesting, I've included this in your docket, if you look at the application that was made for this variance, our application was amended years ago so that you have to actually check, here are the five criteria, and you have to check that, in fact, you meet all those criteria. The applicant hasn't done that. Two of those, in his case, he looked at them and left two of those blank, which tells me that they recognize that they don't meet all five of those criteria. The other thing is that, and I was speaking to Mr. Cozler today briefly, and in passing, he mentioned about the fact that there was a pool on this lot, which I was not aware of, which does not show up on the survey. And that further complicates this because if you were to subdivide this as being proposed, that would end up as an accessory structure on its own lot, which isn't permitted. And Mr. Holder and I were speaking about this. I've not seen this, but you'd almost have to go get a variance to be able to do the subdivision to have just an accessory structure on a lot.
Paul, can you go back to the previous slide? That area there, that's the buildable area. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be. What's the adept of the building area?
37?
37?
37.
Yeah, 37. 37 feet.
Okay, so you still could only have a house.
37.8 something.
Where's the pool sit on this?
It sits on the back corner.
So it's on the new lot.
Right.
On the new lot, in the back corner.
So if they were to bring in a subdivision, this would not be a simple subdivision because it has to come, I think you have to get at least a variance.
Well, we certainly have to appeal this granting of variance. Yeah, I make a motion that we do that.
Motion on second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
You know, the other thing that I want to mention is that I think when council chooses to take a position with regard to a variance, I think we almost need to have someone from John's office represent the township at those hearings.
Don't we send somebody from staff to those meetings?
Well, in this particular one, Jim Sutter, the zoning officer, expressed the fact that it was council's position not to grant this variance.
Am I correct that the counter to that was, we don't care?
Well, no, I think the counter to that was, we don't understand the reasoning. So I think, you know, the fact of the matter is, we now have, I think this is the fifth case that we've asked John to be involved in. It'd be a hell of a lot cheaper to have John or somebody from his office here for the hearings than to have them in court.
Can we replace the slatsetter for the zoning hearing board?
You cannot.
Because here's the issue. I mean, I know I've been harping on this for the last six months, but.
Two of us have.
When you look at this application, you have somebody who's got a house and a pool, and the zoning board concludes that they have a hardship, that they're entitled to a second house on the property with the 25-foot flaglot. Now, if we didn't appeal this, everyone in this township who has at least one acre of land and decides they want to put grandma in the backyard could come and file the same application, and I don't see that the zoning board would have any justification not to grant it, which means we'd be appealing these left and right. But again, I've recited the requirements of a variance too many times. I'm not going to do it again. But I think we should send Mr. Smith or somebody from his office to every zoning hearing board meeting going forward, at least until this.
Well, I'm only suggesting the ones where we look at the.
And you take a position.
We take a position. I don't know that we have to have somebody in attendance at all our meetings, but to the extent that you took a position on this, we need to get their attention. I think somebody from John's office could get their attention.
No problem for me.
Nope. I think it makes sense.
I got a question on this one thing. It says Exhibit A, Staff Report. Who gets that?
Goes to the zoning hearing board.
Because, you know, I think it's kind of a little bit misleading on here where it says, "The zoning hearing board may take one of the following actions to approve the variance request presented." It should say, if it meets all the criteria for a variance, I mean, right there, you're just saying, well, you can approve it if you want. I mean, it doesn't say anything about the, it has to meet all those criteria.
Yeah, but if you look at the application, Frank, that's exactly what it says. The other thing that, you know, I had a discussion with John, and I had a discussion with John Trent, and I've had a discussion with Mark about this. You know, what's the role of the zoning officer at these hearings? And what they all conclude, and I have a hard time arguing against it, is that his job is not to represent the township's position. He may be informing them what the township's position is. And so if you're going to have somebody argue in favor or against a variance, it has to be someone else, so.
So how do we raise that issue about the pool being on a separate lot, and that's in and of itself a variance? They haven't asked for that. So you're never going to be able to build on that because you wouldn't get an occupancy permit if it went through.
We wouldn't permit the subdivision if it isn't.
I'm just looking at his application. I mean, he doesn't check the box. It says unnecessary hardship not created by a appellant. I mean, even on the application, he acknowledges that he doesn't qualify for two of the five prongs, and they give it to him anyway.
Right.
And I think, I mean, come on!
With the swimming pool, too, you can't grant a variance that would violate our ordinance, and that is exactly what it does. As soon as you create that lot, you made an accessory structure standalone.
And see, I don't think the zoning hearing board knew about the pool. Quite frankly, we didn't know about the pool because it doesn't show yet on our GIS system because the survey shows the house and the garage, but it doesn't show the pool.
Well, is that not in the record then, right?
No, maybe once we file an appeal, we talk to Tom and say, "Look, maybe you need to lay this down because they didn't give you all their information, the applicant."
Or maybe it was brought up at the meeting.
Yeah, that's true. I don't.
It might have been. Because, I mean, based on where that, if you superimpose the building area, what would be that back lot, they'd be right up against that pool anyway. He'd pretty much be stepping out of the back of his house right into the swimming pool.
This is a weird way to do this. Okay. Good to move on? Yeah. All right. Item B, approval for recording purposes of the Tuscany II Plan of Lot Subdivision II.
So this is a modification to the existing Tuscany II Plan, and the modification takes, has three parts.
Is that the lot that was in the no spraying zone?
That's right. So it's removing that designation. It's creating an additional lot in the plan along Guest About Road. And one of the things that was discovered is that where that circle is, the property on the other side of the street actually pinches into their property. And the only reason why that was significant is that there is a service road that goes up to a stormwater pond, and it happened across that.
And they only figured this out now.
We actually, we'll give credit to Mike Muddery's good vision because Mike Muddery's the one that noticed this. And so the planning commission reviewed this and has recommended it be approved. I think this in part solves the problem with the service road up into the pond, with the exception that when the highway occupancy permit was issued by PennDOT, it fixes the location of that service drive, and it goes over top of that triangle. I'm not suggesting that they need to remedy that right now, but before we accept the public improvements in this plan, I think that needs to be remedied. They need to go back to PennDOT and amend it.
There's a plan right now that's submitted for that piece across the street, right?
You're talking Newcastle?
Yeah. Is that that property?
Actually, no, this is a different property.
Okay, all right. And how did they come up with the extra lot, then?
Oh, this, when they originally did this, there was concern about how to fit this in there, given the restrictions of the wetlands and everything else. They have been able to do that, and so there's actually a place for an additional lot, and I don't think the township has any interest in that one way or the other.
No, not at all. I was just curious how they found another lot, that's all. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the recording purposes of the Tuscany Plan II of Lots Subdivision Number Two, as shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated July 17, 2024, for KDH Consulting Engineers.
Second. Motion on second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Does that? Does that include requiring the highway occupancy permit?
Yes, subject to all the conditions included by the county manager, sorry.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 401. Next item will be approval for recording purposes of the Brookwood Place Amendment Number Seven.
All this is, is a subdivision that realizes the exact locations of the walls that have been constructed for these townhouses. In my manager's report, I talk about holding on to the plan for recording purposes until we get resolved the problem we had out there with sidewalks. I went out today to check, as of today, those sidewalks have all been floored, so there's no reason not to approve this plan as it's submitted.
I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes, the Brookwood Place Amendment Number Seven, as shown on drawings prepared by Servdude Land Surveying, dated August 21, 2024, for Infinity Custom Homes.
Second. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 50. Next item will be a time extension for the Trax Farm subdivision, Plan Number Five.
All they want is a 50-day extension, to try to figure out the clean and green problem. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve a 50-day extension for the approval of the Trax Farm subdivision, Plan Number Five.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 50. Next will be a resolution accepting Silk Lick Lane and a portion of Magnolia Drive, as well as public improvements and dedicated public easements in the Brookwood Village Plan.
So the public improvement of the former roads and storm showers in the Brookwood Village Plan of lots have been determined by Mr. Zomitis and Gateway Engineers to be ready for acceptance. Gateway has inspected the installation of all those public improvements. So it's my recommendation that council approve Resolution 10-224, accepting the Silk Lick Lane, a portion of Magnolia Drive, as well as the public improvements and the dedicated public easements.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 50. Item F, resolution accepting maintenance responsibilities for the stormwater management facilities on parcel AR and parcel BR, as shown on the recorded Juniper Woods Plan.
So the developer, Juniper Woods, has received a notice of termination from the Washington County Conservation District related to their National Pollution and Discharge Elimination System permit. So therefore, those ponds are ready, the maintenance responsibility is ready to be taken over by the township. Again, this is a little different than what we have done in the past. We are not accepting the land, and the responsibility for the landscaping around the ponds remains with the Home Motage Association. We are accepting the responsibility for maintaining the stormwater management facility and its operation.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 10-03-24, accepting maintenance responsibility for stormwater management ponds located in the Juniper Woods Plan of lots.
Wait for a second, I'm curious, there was a gentleman, like, I don't know, at a corner from this plan, who the water was infringing upon his land, and is that all taken care of? Okay. Second.
Second, okay. Excuse me. A motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
41. Anyway, next item will be, kind of caught me off guard there. Resolution supporting.
That's my goal.
Resolution supporting Peters Creek Sanitary Authority's application for an LSA grant.
So the Peters Creek Sanitary Authorities would like to make application for a local share count grant. The purpose of that is to do a lining project. The reason why they're coming to Peters Township, part of that work is going to be done in the Hackett area on some of those sanitary sewers. So it's my recommendation that council approve Resolution 10-424, supporting the application.
So moved. Second. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 50. Next item will be the authorization to submit an LSA grant application.
So we continue to hunt for money to do the MS4 project on the Barcliff property. Our intention is to apply for a grant of $500,000 from the local share count grant. It's my recommendation that council authorize the township manager to submit that application.
So moved. Second. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 50. Final item under new business will be ordinance amending the Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 385 subdivision of land development, and Chapter 440 zoning, so basically what we talked about in the public hearing, this would be enacted, that then.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to the Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 385 subdivision and land development, and Chapter 440 zoning.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 50. Payroll bills, I reviewed the payroll bills prior to this evening, so we thought them all be in order, and we move that we approve those.
All second.
Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 50. Correspondence, not saying anything there. Does anybody wish to discuss anything under reports? See nothing miscellaneous? Is there anything else you want to head on?
No, we talked about the ball field enough. But the only other thing is, we'd like to set a date for the public hearing for the budget for November 25, which is a regular council meeting.
Okay. Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Next agenda. Everybody have anything?
Nope.
After you said, we'll journey.